Good evening. Welcome to the November 1st, 2023 meeting of the Oceanside City Council. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask our city clerk to call roll, please.
Mayor Sanchez.
President.
Deputy Mayor Keim.
Here.
Councilmember Joyce.
President.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you. We have for this evening the invocation by Mel Vernon, Captain Mel Vernon. He's the tribal captain for the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians. Please rise.
We come here today in celebration of Native American Month, a time to reflect and acknowledge the first people of this land, the Paiomcoachim, people of the West, also known as the Luiseño. They are still living here today, our ancestors that for thousands of years called this place home, now known as Oceanside, California. From the wisdom of those past elders to our community leaders of today, much remains the same. Our community comes together and sets a goal to make a better life for all of the people living here in this present time. Grandfather, give us the strength and the vision to see the beauty all around us and in all the life you have created, the courage to walk the path that you have laid at our feet, and the will to follow your spirit, to come together to face the challenges that lie ahead. In peace. Amen. Oh.
Thank you. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Weiss, if you could please lead us.
Ready? Begin. The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the people for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you. And it's November, so it is Native American Heritage Month here in Oceanside. I'd like to ask members of the tribe to come forward. And this is the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians. Thank you for coming. We've got the what other tribes call chairman, the captain of the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians, who just heard in terms of the invocation, Mel Vernon. We also have his sister, Diana Caudell, who is a basket weaver. She's a member of the Basket Weaver, California Basket Weavers Association. And we have
Candy Kaiser.
Carol Hernandez.
Justine Lunabo.
Shelley O'Garrow.
Thank you so much for being here. And here's a proclamation in honor of National Native American Heritage Month, November 2023. Whereas, like our great nation, the history and culture of our local community and state began with the history and culture of Native American and Indigenous peoples. And whereas, we acknowledge Paiomcoachim.
Paiomcoachim.
Okay. Paiomcoachim.
There you go.
Did it? Yeah. The people of the West have called the North San Luis County and Camp Pendleton region home for more than 10,000 years. And today, known as the Luiseño people, are represented by several bands and tribes: La Jolla, Paula, Palma, Pechanga, Rincon, San Luis Rey, and Soboba. And whereas, the contributions of Native Americans have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today. The customs and traditions of Native Americans are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States and our city of Oceanside. And whereas, evidence of tribal cultural resources found throughout our region prove that the Luiseños have a long history and a rich culture that existed before first European contact, arrival of the Spanish missionaries, Mexican rule, and the establishment of the United States. And the Luiseños have survived every challenge, generation after generation, adapting to meet changing times and circumstances with great optimism. And whereas, we celebrate our commitments to respect and preserve the rich Native American history and traditions in the city of Oceanside. And whereas, the most sacred responsibility of the Luiseño people is to preserve and protect their ancestral territory. And the city of Oceanside has been an exceptional partner to the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians in a unified commitment to honor and protect historical and cultural sites. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther C. Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim November 2023 as National Native American Heritage Month in the city of Oceanside, continuing our commitment to work with the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians in the preservation of our shared cultural heritage. I urge all residents and visitors to observe this month by enjoying Native American Heritage programs, ceremonies, and activities, including the Spirit of the Valley Circle of Life Arts Festival, celebrating the arts and culture of the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians this Saturday, November 4th, 2023, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Heritage Park, Oceanside. And they are going to have fried bread there. Gosh, can't say. So this is a wonderful, wonderful event. That is the, is this the third or fourth?
Third.
Third annual, which is now becoming a tradition. So thank you so much, Mel. I'm going to go ahead and give this to you, this proclamation, and give you the mic as well.
Thank you, Wester. Thank you, council members and everyone here in the audience. We are going to have a great celebration this Saturday, starting at 11 o'clock, all the way to 4:00. My sister's going to be doing some basket teaching, fry bread booths going on there. I'll be kind of the emcee. We're going to have our drum be there. We're going to have some flute playing. We're going to have some storytelling. And so it ought to be a great time. And appreciate the city and also the whole community for coming out and joining us. Thank you.
Thank you. It is truly a partnership because there is always someone, you know, whenever there's a development, we have representation onsite to ensure that if there are any cultural items, that they are preserved, categorized and preserved. So, and this is something that obviously doesn't happen in public because, you know, the idea is not for people to start digging to find, you know, these kind of artifacts, but to ensure the preservation and continued, basically honoring this great tribe that was, that's been here for 10,000, 10,000 years. Thank you. So let's go ahead and take this picture.
Oh, okay. Picture. Come on. Sorry, let's just. Did you say, want to say anything about the basket weaving or cultural fire or anything?
Okay. Yeah, my name is Diana Caudell, and I sit on the board for the California Indian Basket Weavers Association and also for the Tribal Pesticide Program Council for EPA, and also a member and elder for the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians. So we're going to be teaching baskets there, but they're not going to be the traditional because we'd have to go out and gather our traditional materials. So it's going to be the Cherokee-style baskets that I'll be teaching. It's going to be free to the public. We'll be there from 11 to 4:00. And please come and join that. We'll be having, like Mel said, drums, et cetera. And just come. We welcome everybody.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Our next presentation, and it is a presentation, is regarding an award of excellence for the city of Oceanside. Like to go ahead and call Dolores Gaskin, who is the director of HR from the city of Vista. She has a very important award to be giving out to, drum roll. Yeah. To, and it's called the Kevin Powell Award of Excellence in Human Resources, and it is to the City of Oceanside Human Resources Department. Come on down, everyone. You all deserve this.
Yay. This is Oceanside Personality Party. Yeah. There you go.
So, good evening, honorable mayor and council. My name is Dolores Gasko, and I am the Human Resources Director at the city of Vista. I'm also an Oceanside resident who was born and raised here, second generation. I am
86 El Camino.
Okay. Thank you. Go Wildcats. The, I'm here today on behalf of the city, San Diego City County Personnel Association, also known as CCPA. The Kevin Powell Award for Excellence in Human Resources recognizes CCPA members whose efforts have made a significant positive impact in one or more areas of human resources work. Kevin Powell was a valued member of the San Diego County HR community up until his passing in August of 2020. Kevin was devoted to improving and building up human resources within the public sector, and our HR community misses him tremendously, but know that his legacy continues through this award. This year, led by Principal HR Analyst Jennifer Echfahlier and employees from the Human Resources Department, the city of Oceanside introduced its Leadership Development Academy. The objective of the academy is to develop the city's talent pool of high potential and high-performing employees with leadership competencies that support the city's objectives, increase employee morale and retention, improve productivity, promote better decision-making, and build better teams. The 10-week, 20-hour curriculum focuses on both leadership competencies and technical skills, with the former facilitated by a city consultant and the latter by the HR team. In developing this homegrown program, the team was able to secure approval and funding from city administrators and launched a successful program that now has graduated several cohorts. How many exactly, Jen?
We've got 40.
That's amazing. Forty members.
Fantastic.
Further, Jen and the team developed a program of continuing education for the graduates, which includes once-a-quarter leadership competency sessions and microsessions in HR. On behalf of the San Diego CCPA membership, it is my honor to present the 2023 Kevin Powell Award for Excellence in Human Resources to the city of Oceanside. In addition to this lovely award
Isn't it? Oh, it's beautiful.
Yeah. In addition to this lovely award, there is a perpetual plaque that is currently in Chula, Vista, and is making its way up the coast, and that will also be given to you in the coming weeks. So congratulations, Jennifer and the HR team. This is something really amazing, and you should be very proud of yourselves.
Woo! Thank you, everyone. On behalf of the HR department, which consists of HR, Risk, and IT divisions, I proudly accept this award. By the way, my name's Rob O'Brien. I'm the deputy city manager and also still get to wear the hat of the HR director. I just want to thank the CCPA board for selecting our team for this year's Kevin Powell Award of Excellence in HR. This award is that much more meaningful because it comes from a group of our professional peers, and that means a lot to those of us in the industry. I also want to take a moment to thank Dolores for taking time out of her evening today to present this award to us. Just real quick, you know, I started with the city eleven, a little over seven years ago, and Dolores was one of the first amongst our professional peers to welcome me and has always been a great source of support and professional advice, so I truly appreciate that. So thank you. Obviously, I would be remiss if I did not say how proud I am of the folks you see in front of you tonight. The project, led by Jen, took the coordinated and collaborative efforts of all these folks and some that couldn't be here tonight to make that program such a success. And so I cannot say thank you enough to you for all your support and all the work you do on behalf of the city and our employees. Finally, as Dolores mentioned, Kevin was a very dedicated HR professional and public servant, and so to accept this award in his name is a huge honor. With that, mayor, thank you so much for the time and our council members for the time this evening to be recognized. Thank you.
Pitch your time, maybe come closer together.
Yeah.
Thank you. Always happy to receive an award of excellence for our folks that work here at city of Oceanside. Thank you so much. Thank you for all your hard work. Next is the city managed, the closed session report by Mr. Mullen.
Thank you. The council met at 3:30 in closed session to discuss the status of negotiations with the Oceanside Police Officers Association. There is no reportable action under the Brown Act on that item, and there was no meeting on item two on the agenda.
Thank you. Next, our consent item, consent items, items number four through 14, no requests to pull from the public, is that correct?
We have no request from the public.
There's items four to 14, there is a motion to approve. There's a motion and a second to approve.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. First general item is item number 15, introduction of an ordinance amending Oceanside City Code Chapter 2, Sections 2.1, 2.6 Subsection B, 2.1, 2.27 Subsection D, and 2.1, 3.8 Subsection D, to allow organized presentations by members of the public at city council meetings subject to specific requirements. I want to go ahead and ask Mr. Mullen for the report.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. As you recall, at your last city council meeting, we discussed a proposal to eliminate the advance request to speak option and to maintain the normal non-agenda public comment process. That proposal, excuse me, was not adopted, but during your deliberations, you directed staff to revise the city code to overturn the current ban on members of the public donating or sharing time to speak on both agenda items and non-agenda items and public hearing items. And so I have drafted the necessary amendments to the city code to implement the council's direction. The proposal before you involves the same amendment to three different sections of the code. Those code sections, as the mayor noted, are 2.1.26B, that deals with comments on agenda items, 2.1.27 subdivision D, dealing with testimony on non-agenda items, and 2.1.38 subsection D, dealing with public hearing testimony. The amendments allow the representative of a group of at least four persons to have up to 10 minutes to speak, provided that all members of the group are identified on the speaker slip, which is filed before the item is called. Members of the group stay for the duration of the group presentation. Once effective, this new rule will apply to all types of public testimony, including the agenda, non-agenda comments, and public hearing testimony. That's a pretty straightforward amendment. I'm prepared to title the ordinance and answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
Yes, we do. We have one speaker on this item, Shelley Parker.
Ms. Parker?
Thank you. So no request to speak from the public. To council, is there a motion?
I have a request.
Okay, there's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay. Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you. Mr. Mullen, and I'm sorry I didn't bring this up to you sooner, but as I was listening to you, and would this, this doesn't prevent the mayor or whoever's running the meeting, if somebody hasn't done it in writing, like tonight, if there's a large number of speakers if she wanted to say, to offer up that time to, to speak as a group, that could happen, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. No other, did you want to speak, Councilmember Joyce? Okay. No other requests to speak? Please vote.
I'll need to title it.
Yes.
This is the introduction of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Oceanside, amending Oceanside City Code Chapter 2, Sections 2.1.26 Subdivision B, 2.1.27 Subdivision D, and 2.1.38 Subdivision D, to allow organized presentations by members of the public at city council meetings subject to specific requirements.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Next item is item number 16, and that is an introduction of an ordinance to amend Oceanside City Code 2.52 to exempt the proposed energy conservation project from the voter approval requirement under uncodified ordinance 84-19. We have a report by Mr. Rob, Mr. Bob, Rob O'Brien, our deputy city manager, and also personnel manager.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council, Rob O'Brien, deputy city manager. Although I will be providing a very high-level overview of a proposed energy conservation project through NG Services, the specific action the city council will be taking this evening is the introduction of the ordinance that, if ultimately approved, would exempt energy conservation projects from the voter approval requirement under uncodified ordinance On April 6, 2022, the city council approved a contract with NG Services, Inc. to perform an integrated assessment and investment-grade audit of city-owned facilities to identify potential energy savings. Inclusive of the study was an engineering and financial analysis for recommended improvements. The goal of the NG program is ultimately that the project costs are offset by the future energy cost savings. Over the last year and a half, city staff have worked closely with NG on their facility and infrastructure site assessments, preliminary program development for community engagement, economic development, and public relations communication planning. Throughout this work period, staff completed multiple reviews and revisions to the project's scope and retained a third-party consultant to validate NG's valuation and savings assessment, which resulted in future refinements, or further refinements, excuse me, which are reflected within the project's proposed energy conservation measures. As we discuss the proposed project, it is important to note that city facilities that were excluded from the project were determined by NG to not have the infrastructure needs and/or capacity to provide sufficient energy savings to offset costs. Primarily in response to Proposition 13, the GAN initiative spending limitation and potential economic uncertainties posed by those state voter initiatives, the city council adopted uncodified ordinance 8419 in 1984 by a narrow 3-2 vote. 8419 generally requires voter approval prior to the authorization of public debt for certain capital improvement projects, property acquisitions, and/or improvements to real property when the amount of public debt to be repaid from the general fund exceeds the authorized debt limit. The 1984 ordinance specifically excludes projects funded by state and federal grants for specific purposes, special assessments, community development block grant funds, community development commission or redevelopment funds, and small craft harbor funds. Another important note is that in 1998, the city council unanimously adopted ordinance number 9719, which directs the city treasurer to update the debt limit annually. Staff utilizes the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers, San Diego to Carlsbad, California area, to calculate the authorized debt limit. The current debt limit is $9.8 million. At their discretion, the city council may elect to exempt projects that would otherwise fall under the requirements of 8419. Such action last took place on April 10, 2019, when the city council voted unanimously to exempt the construction of what is today the William A. Wagner. The addition of solar photovoltaics, otherwise known as solar panels, would generate clean onsite power via solar shade structures and/or rooftop canopies. Many of you may recall or might not be aware that back in 2015 and 16, the city entered into a power purchase agreement, which is effectively a lease agreement with PFMG Solar LLC, which resulted in the installation of solar panels at a variety of city facilities. As such, the opportunities for additional solar were limited. I would also like to point out that unlike the power purchase agreement, the city would actually own all of the equipment proposed in the NG project. The Civic Center, as illustrated on this slide, would be the largest beneficiary of the addition of solar panels within the project's scope. I would also like to emphasize that the city buildings that are depicted on the slide are long overdue for a roof replacement, and that would be pressed under the installation of solar in this project. Additional solar projects, primarily in the form of shade structures similar to what we see today at MLK Park as an example, are listed under Attachment B of the staff. In addition to solar, there are identified additional energy conservation measures or ECMs. The staff report under the same attachment lists specific facilities under these different bullet points, but I'll quickly just highlight some of the positives. Interior and exterior LED lighting upgrades are a basic measure that would provide an immediate reduction in energy consumption and maintenance costs. The central plant upgrades would consist of HVAC unit and duct replacements and refurbishments consisting of repairing, optimizing, and replacing aging HVAC systems to reduce maintenance costs, extend equipment life, and provide energy savings and improve building comfort, excuse me. The most significant of the HVAC unit replacements would take place at the Civic Center. The chiller, which is the central cooling system for all of our buildings, is well past its life expectancy. It's frequently being worked on and candidly is operating on borrowed time. Similarly, the exhaust and supply fans throughout the Civic Center buildings are in desperate need of replacement. Obviously, being this close to the ocean, the harsh environment creates rust, and so a full replacement of those fans is required. There are additional, as I mentioned earlier, the list provides additional areas where HVAC unit replacement and refurbishments would also be required. The advanced energy management system provides citywide consistency in energy management and control systems to allow for easier and more efficient monitoring and adjustment of temperature in city facilities. This measure allows city staff to have better control of heating and cooling, saving costs, and staff time. This change will also ensure that the various sites are all operating with the same system. Replacing old transformers with newer, more efficient units helps reduce losses both when operating and in standby modes and improves site electrical infrastructure reliability. The last item, the battery energy storage system, would help avoid peak demand charges and optimize energy rates. Unfortunately, due to the required size and logistical challenges, there was only one site, which is the mission lift station, that would be a viable location to introduce this type of ECM. One of the benefits of the NG project that's inclusive of this project is a number of community engagement programs that NG is committing to implement and support. This slide simply highlights just a few of the examples of the type of programs that are available. As mentioned previously in this presentation, unlike the power purchase agreements the city entered into back in 15 and 16, the city would own all of the solar systems that would be installed under this project. The city retained a third-party consultant who performed an independent analysis of the proposed project and confirmed that the methodology used by NG to calculate the annual savings of the proposed solar generation projects was valid. Further, the consultant confirmed that the project's year-one operational savings associated with replacing and retrofitting aging equipment and the addition of more efficient lighting and HVAC equipment was both fair and reasonable. Further, utility cost savings were estimated using a conservative annual year-over-year energy rate escalation factor of 4%. The higher the assumed escalation factor of future rates, the higher resulting annual savings in each future year. Although the actual, actual historical rates increases the city has had over the past nine years is 8.52%, the 4% escalation factor was considered the most Finally, the proposed program is estimated to produce a reduction of greenhouse gas emissions to the tune of 2,764 metric tons each year of CO2 each year. The project is self-funding as the annual savings estimated exceed the annual project's costs, resulting in a net positive gain. The total project cost to be financed is currently estimated at $22.3 million. The annual The annual material net savings of the project is currently estimated at $329,000 or $47,000 specific to the general fund. It's important to point out that that net savings is after the costs have been paid. That's above and beyond once the costs have been paid. Over the 20-year financing term, this equates to a total of $6.6 million in material net savings. Under the proposed project, the city is also eligible for funding relief through the federal government's Inflation Reduction Act program. In addition, the city submitted timely interconnect agreements to SDGNE, which were approved by the utility. This means that the city is grandfathered into Net Energy Metering 2.0 for the next 20 years. Net Energy Metering, or NEM, is the mechanism by which utilities pay a customer for excess energy that the customer provides to the grid when its solar generation equipment produces more power than the customer uses. By locking in NEM 2.0, the city will receive 40% more in payments than if we were only to qualify for the current NEM 3. The project funding from these two sources are reflected in the project's estimated total cost and savings model. Finally, the funding for the project would like, would qualify under a tax-exempt lease purchase with a 20-year term. The city has engaged Urban Futures, Inc., who will complete an RFP to solicit bids from lenders with direct experience financing these specific projects, and this would also include the opportunity to present alternative financing structuring options that the city may want to consider. But this time, staff recommends that the city council introduce an ordinance to amend Oceanside City Code 2.52 to exempt a proposed energy conservation project from voter approval, from the voter approval requirement under uncodified ordinance 8419. In terms of next step, steps, if introduced, staff will return on November 15 for the final reading and adoption of the ordinance. The timing of the financing and how that is ultimately structured will be the immediate focus and will dictate how quickly we can return to you for formal approval to potentially move forward with the project and the associated funding. So with that, thank you for your time and attention, and I will be available for any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
Yes, we do. We have one speaker, Patty Kay.
Okay, Ms. Kay.
I believe she might be outside.
Patty Kay.
There she is.
Good evening. There may be questions for the presenter, and these are just questions. They're, you know, I'm not that versed in it. However, this ordinance tonight, sir, is that to amend and exclude just for this one particular project? Or is that for all energy conservation projects by the city?
If you could, do they answer or do I? Just keep going, and then he'll answer all your questions. Because he's gonna, he's good at writing notes.
Yeah, sorry. That was question number one, because I don't really think, last week, you preserved the voters' right to speak, and this, this would, if this is true, take away voters' right to approve everything in the conservation energy in the city. So that was the question. Areas of concern. Part of the agenda item on page three are a number of community engagement programs by NG that NG is supporting. So since NG is your consultant, and they are supporting these programs, is the city supporting NG's programs? Because that's a big question. Why we should, we should be doing that? Saving money on solar panels, et cetera, and energy conservation things are one thing, but supporting our consultant NG on other programs that are listed on page three. Paid internships for local residents. I don't understand that. And these are questions. Civic Spark, we pay for them, and they, by definition, build capacity for local governments. It is concerning climate change, water resource management, affordable housing, and mobility are projects of NG. I better hurry up. Okay. Why does the city normally support summer and after-school STEM programs? STEM programs are awesome, but are we in the business of doing that? So in other words, the question is, are we supporting NG to support these programs out of city money? The other thing is, over 20 years, that's, that's minimal to the, to the residents. However, my family members were in energy retrofit, and within a 10-year period, they'd go and retrofit and saved, you know, hundreds of dollars each year to the business. But then, within that 10-year period, there was something newer and better. So the family members would go back at their expense, the business expense, and retrofit again. So over a 20-year period, that's a pretty long time, although it does reduce the amount, you know, to the citizen as it goes. So those were, those were questions, and that's it.
Thank you very much. No other requests to speak from the public? So go to staff to respond to the, it sounds like there were a couple of questions there.
Mayor, I'll take the first one, which related to the actual ordinance, and then I'll defer to Rob to answer the other questions. The first question asked about, is this just specific to the NG contract? Or is it more broad? The motivation for it is the proposed NG contract. We don't have a contract with NG. If we want to do a contract with NG this year and take advantage of the economic benefits associated with it, this ordinance is an impediment to it. But it is more broadly written to exempt from voter approval any energy conservation facility as that term is defined in Government Code Section 421711E or the city's approval of an energy service contract, facility financing contract, or ground lease as those terms are defined in that statutory scheme that I mentioned before. That's what the next step would be, is to do an agreement, an energy service contract, as called for in that statutory process. That's the intent, is that we would have this approved and then bring forward that contract. If you weren't going to approve this, then it might effectively nullify the project because we'd have to go to the voters presumably in November. So that's the staff's intent. But it's written more broadly because there is a chance the NG contract may not make it here, and we could go with another provider.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien?
I think to try to concisely answer the question related to the, the community programming, whatever programs we decide to implement as part of this project, it's NG supporting us. So we are deciding on what programs we want to try to introduce to our community. So those were just some examples, some of which they have done with other communities where they've done these similar projects. We just had, you know, discussions as what would be a potential interest. So some of the STEM programming was discussed in coordination with Parks and Rec, and our library services is something that would be of interest. Some of the internship programs, like the Civic Spark, is one that could be getting assistance for the development of our Climate Action Plan. So they have internship programs that NG would pay for to have that individual work here in our organization to help with that, that planning. So that would be something that we would develop in greater depth if we get to that point where we're coming forward with a contract as to what those different programs might look like.
In terms of public benefit.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so to the council, is there a motion to introduce the ordinance? Okay, is there a second? All right, I don't see any lights. Oh, Councilmember Weiss?
Yeah, I just have one question, Mr. O'Brien. You commented that at the end of the payment plan, the city will have ownership of the solar system?
Correct.
The complete solar, do we have exclusive ownership of the solar system?
The panels, all that would be ours.
Not planets?
Not Pluto, though. Not Pluto.
Okay, it's not trick-or-treat. I mean, it's not April Fools, yeah. All right, so motion, please title the ordinance, Mr. Mellon.
This is an introduction of the, an ordinance of the city council, the city of Oceanside, amending Chapter 2, Article 9, Section 2.52 of the Oceanside City Code to exempt the financing of energy conservation facilities as defined in Government Code Section 4217.11 from the voter approval requirement of uncodified ordinance 84-19 and ordinance 97-19.
Please vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
Thank you. Item number 17, how many speakers do we have so far?
We have 18.
18. Okay, let's go to number 18. 18 is approval of a master lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management, Inc. for the leasing, purchasing, and sale of vehicles for the police department. Approval of a purchase order in an amount not to exceed $2.2 million per fiscal year. Appropriation of $2.2 million from the fleet fund for the Enterprise Fleet Management account. Authorization for the Financial Services Director or Designee to execute the purchase order, and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement. And we have a report today by Police Captain John McKeon.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, city council members. My name is Captain John McKeon with the Oceanside Police Department. I'm here to present a program that we believe will significantly enhance the administrative and financial responsibility of the largest fleet in the city. Staff recommends that the city council approve a master lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management, Incorporated, for the leasing, purchasing, and sale of vehicles for the police department. Also to approve a purchase order in an amount not to exceed $2.2 million per fiscal year and appropriation of $2.2 million from the Fleet Replacement Fund into the Fleet, new Enterprise Fleet Management Fund. A little bit of background on this. Since COVID several years ago, there, accessing vehicles for law enforcement across the country has been a very, it's a very hard hunt with car shortages, vehicle shortages, coming down from overseas. Everybody across the country is having a hard time finding police vehicles. Parts for vehicles are also a hard time coming down and getting here, and now we're dealing with strikes back in Detroit over the Big Three automakers. So finding vehicles is definitely hard on the city to find vehicles for us. The current OPD vehicle, as you know, we run 24/7. Our vehicles are older than what they should have been. A majority of our vehicles should have been replaced two years ago, but due to the fact that we are unable to get vehicles, we've had to keep those vehicles longer than expected. And right now, we have no, we have no current electric vehicles and only a few hybrid vehicles that are in our program. We've, along the years, we've created several new work units, but we haven't, for some of the work units, we haven't asked for in more vehicles, and which puts a extra strain on the vehicles that we normally use for patrol because they get tasked out to use with other vehicles. Also, the city, we also, we auction the vehicles off kind of at a lower price than that's available, it's out there. And that's one of the things that we are going to take the benefit of when we are, if it's approved, going with Enterprise Fleet Management. Since early this year, the police department's been working with Enterprise Fleet Management to develop a workable solution over the next five years to try to come up with a way to be able to relieve some of the administrative and financial burden from the city to help the city procure vehicles. The Sourcewell Contract, what a Sourcewell Contract is, is a nationwide program whose member includes government and other entities in several states, including California. It's a cooperated purchasing program that enables entities to purchase vehicles as an on-needed basis from competitively awarded contracts with high-performing vendors across there. One of the things that the, the city does, we have to buy from government contracts in the city, which is only two or three different dealers in Northern California, and all the California, all the California police departments all order from the same one, which causes a logjam when you're trying to order vehicles. We are going to, this is a different way of doing business. We're going to be leasing vehicles instead of outright buying vehicles. We have total control over how much we put down as a down payment, how long we want the lease to go forward. We can determine that on every vehicle that we buy. The other thing that we could do is we can exit out of this, this procurement only after, or after we purchase the remaining balance of the vehicles, and we can, if the city council decides that they no want to, no longer want to go with Enterprise Fleet Management, we are not held in any time of long-term contracts in there. Right now, we have 152 vehicles out of the 178 that the police department has of our rolling stock. These vehicles are, the 152 will be in there. You could see the breakdown. We broke them down into two categories. One is black and white vehicles. The other one is undercover and/or our admin vehicles that we use. These are the only 52 vehicles that will be in there. And the thing that we're going to do out of these 152 vehicles, we're going to start to transition into electric vehicles. We have an initial purchase that we plan on doing of five completely electric vehicles. We hope to go forward with more electric vehicles in the future once the city and the infrastructure is built to be able to maintain and charge these vehicles here. The city's fleet department will continue to do all the maintenance and servicing all these vehicles. This will not be outsourced to anybody else. They will maintain all of those vehicles, although we are hoping in reduced costs due to newer vehicles, newer safety features, better gas mileage on the vehicles that we are going to be getting. The physical impact on this, all these numbers here are very conservative numbers. We, over the next five years, we don't plan on going down below $2 million in our fleet fund. Once again, that's for unforeseen circumstances. There are some things that we can't control. We can't control prices. We can't control price increases with vendors, and that's somebody on things. Couple of things that we can control. But in these numbers, we did account for inflation going forward that. So based off the inflation rate over the next couple of years, those prices in, or the numbers there are kind of the highest end numbers of where we're going to be. We believe them to be, going to be a lot lower. In the end of '24, '25, we are going to reassess, take a look at this to see how the numbers are working, where we need to improve on the, on the budget on this, making sure that all this is falling in line with what we want to do. But it'll also be monitored as we go along. The recommendations, staff recommends that the city council approve the master lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management, Incorporated, for the leasing, purchasing, and sale of vehicles for the police department, and approve a purchase order in an amount not to exceed $2.2 per fiscal year, and appropriate $2.2 from the fleet fund to Enterprise Fleet Management account, and also authorize the Financial Service Director or Designee to execute the purchase order. The, and authorize the city manager or somebody to execute the, or the city manager to execute the agreement. That is all I have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. This is a pretty phenomenal pilot program, project. I never thought it'd be coming, electric vehicles would be coming from the police department. So this is pretty great, and I hope that this works out so well that we can then transition all of our fleet to electric. Deputy Mayor, kind?
So we're going to have a more reliable source of vehicles, and we're going to save money?
Yes, we will with our, Deputy Mayor. We will with Enterprise Fleet Management. What they have is, they're one of the largest car buyers in the world, and they have a reach countrywide to get vehicles from anywhere that they need to get vehicles from. And they also have a good rapport with all the manufacturers of vehicles to get vehicles at a decent price.
Yes, that's, my point, it's proactive. I'm impressed with the work. Going in there to actually save money and get a better project out of it. So I'll move approval.
Thank you. Councilmember Weiss?
Just a quick question. So who's going to outfit them?
Sorry?
Who's going to do the outfitting? Fleet?
Councilman Weiss, no, fleet is not going to outfitting. Enterprise Fleet Management will take care of the purchasing, registration, outfitting, and the resale of vehicles when it's done. They will go to our current vendors that we do have, and they have their own vendors that will outfit the vehicles.
Perfect.
They will deliver the vehicles to us. Heat turn ready. All we have to do is put All we have to do is put in a computer.
Thank you. A second.
Councilmember Joyce?
Did you say that our biggest limitation in getting more electric vehicles is the infrastructure that we need to house them?
Yeah, easy charging.
Is that the, was that what you were saying? The reason we're only having five new electric?
Councilmember Joyce, that's, I mean, that's one of the considerations where we're going to be testing this process. And, you know, we're going to see the city manager will be, our boss, my boss, Chief Saller, will be keeping the city manager abreast on what's going on and how the vehicles are working. And then when the time comes, you know, we would request more, but we also do need the infrastructure to support that.
Okay. It just ties in well with our NG conversation that we just had about, you know, future, future planning for our city. So, okay, looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you to item 20. Ms. Hammerschmidt asks for priority. Ms. Hammerschmidt, this is under advance written request to speak. For your five minutes, so you can make your other meeting.
So, good evening. Arlene Hammerschmidt from Roelish Fire Mountain. And I wanted to help bring the city council up to speed on what's going on regarding implementation of the recommendations of the third-party consultant regarding the complaint of some parks and recreation decisions that ended up looking kind of odd. So your, most of you are familiar with this. This is in your packet as well. What has been happening is a series of workshops run by volunteers from the community for the Parks and Recreation Department to update the critical problem pointed out in this report. And the critical problem is, as a whole, the facility's rental packet. But as an individual keystone problem, it is the user classification, user group classification guide, which had been repeatedly applied subjectively and came out looking quite suspicious, the results did. So in these workshops, these are the norms of the workshop. Everybody's like the environment, environment in the room. For the greater good of all Oceanside, with mutual respect, honesty when you're talking or reporting about anything, transparency, not trying to hide anything, speaking one at a time and staying on task. You also have also have a, this is a workshop two. Tonight, we're holding workshop four. But it gives you an example of the activities that have been completed by the community members and the user group representatives. The first one was to identify the core values. And we did a relatively standard weighted dot. Activity after the a list of over 30 core values was pared down to about 12, I think that is. And the absolute top one was fairness. This is, this is what values should be represented in the user packet and in the guide. That's an absurdly long name. And the first one is fairness. And then tied for 12, but because it's alphabetical order, is community and transparency. So these are the core values, and there are definitions, which is way too long to read, and all of you certainly can. The next part, the next section that we went into was identifying the essential statements that should be in place in the vision statement for both the packet and for the guide. So we identified the essential content for what people would like to see in their vision for four years and also for two. Those were reviewed. And interestingly, but not suspiciously, all of the values were very strongly represented in the essential, the vision statement, a draft of which is to enhance and strengthen the Oceanside community by consistently serving each community member with absolute fairness and transparency. Tonight, at the public meeting, sorry to conflict, we will present a more fleshed-out version of the tentative user group classification guide. This is a bare bones outlet, outline, believe me, bare bones. Lot of research, a lot of time, a lot of community engagement and user group leader engagement has taken place in this, and it's very exciting, very exciting. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hammerschmidt. Okay, to our six o'clock item. That is, is it, we got four minutes. Keep forgetting it's four. Can we call it? It's actually four minutes. Well, let me call another, is Robert Ashton here? Yes. This is under item number 20. A help needed from California Coastal Commission for Oceanside beaches.
We'll get going here.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, city leaders, staff, and fellow citizens. I'm Bob Ashton, President and CEO of Save Oceanside Sand. First of all, thank you for the support and execution of ReBeach. Oceanside is clearly leading the way towards innovative and sustainable solutions for protecting our coastal habitat by restoring and retaining sand on our beaches. Once executed, it will undoubtedly be a model for others across the globe to study and emulate. On October 12th, I had the pleasure of addressing the California Coastal Commission at their meeting in Imperial Beach. My comments address the fact that Oceanside not only needs the Coastal Commission's help in restoring its beaches, but it deserves and has earned it. From my comments on the 12th, and this was summarizing my comments, the obstacle we face is the insistence by some that the Coastal Commission, whatever is proposed, will not approve what comes before them. The specter of Coastal Commission disapproval results in prematurely killing innovative solutions which have the potential to restore and retain sand on our beaches. Ironically, the very beaches the Coastal Act was implemented to protect. In summary, I hope you agree that we share the same goals. I urge you to help us by teaming up with us in Oceanside to restore our beaches, maximize public access, and protect our coastal habitat. So as we departed the meeting, Dr. Kate Hucklebridge, the Executive Director of the Coastal Commission, left the meeting and came out to speak to us. She asked us, who says the Coastal Commission won't approve solutions? She insisted that that isn't the case and that Oceanside is doing everything right with ReBeach, and should continue to engage her staff early and frequently. She said the commission will absolutely consider innovative retention solutions. She thanked us for coming and went back inside to join the meeting. Next, I'd like to share with you a video and dialogue that Dr. Hucklebridge had with the Chair, the Vice Chair, and the staff that very same day following our public comments.
Currently in application in front of the commission that I'm aware of. I, I guess I would start and then turn it over to Carl for more specifics. But I think on the Oceanside sand issue, there, there's not currently an application in front of the commission that I'm aware of, but it is a, it's a, it's an issue that that community has been looking into, you know, what, they've lost a lot of sand on their beaches. How are they going to maintain them? It's an ongoing discussion the community's having. We've been having it with them. I, I actually spoke to the folks that came in to speak today. So we will be continuing to work with the city and encourage their creativity, frankly. I was, I think that the way they're approaching it, they did a big contest to come up with different ideas, and this, it's exactly the approach that we want people to take, to bring all the ideas to the table as we're trying to figure out how we adapt to sea level rise. So I just want to say that. There's nothing in front of the commission immediately, but we're encouraging all the work that's been, that's being done in Oceanside and look forward to looking at a breadth of proposals at some point in the future on how to adapt that community to sea level rise.
Yeah, so just really quickly on that issue, I just hate to read anything that says, oh, we're not even applying because the commission would reject it. I'm sure all of us would agree that that's not the way it goes, so we look forward to that.
I, I made that exact comment to the, the two gentlemen that came in to speak and actually made sure that they could reach out to our staff. And we were, we're interested in having those conversations with, with the, you know, the city itself, with the community members to encourage those discussions. So I agree with you. Do you have any, anything to add?
The only thing I would add to that is that we do have our own technical staff involved with those, those discussions with the city. So, yeah, that's ongoing as well.
Yeah, and I'm just going to add, which is to the commenter who said that we're killing innovative solutions to restore beaches. I just want to invite you to work closely with our staff. Actually, we probably know more about innovative solutions to restore beaches since we think about it 24/7. And we've been involved in a number of beach restoration projects up and down the state. So we have some successful models, but frankly, we're going to have to find more because this is going to become more and more and more a pressing issue because of sea level rise.
So to sum it up, the Coastal Commission is encouraging more cities to do what Oceanside is executing. I urge Oceanside's leaders, staff, and citizens to stay the course towards innovative solutions for our entire 3.7 miles of shoreline. Protect our coastal habitat by restoring our beaches. We can do this and gain coastal resilience for decades to come, as well as be a model for other coastal cities to follow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item number 19. This is a public hearing. Adoption of a resolution continuing the temporary closure of Lagoon View Drive while reserving access solely for emergency response vehicles, excuse me, and various maintenance activities. I'd like to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
For tonight's item, staff only.
Staff only.
No contact?
I spoke with city manager. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Navarro, are there any correspondence and or petitions?
We have not received any correspondence or petition on this item.
Thank you. I'm going to begin with a report by City Engineer Brian Thomas. Mr. Thomas?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Honorable Council Members. My name's Brian Thomas. I'm the city engineer. Tonight before you is, I don't know why that's not on. There we go. Tonight before you is the public hearing for the continued closure of Lagoon View Drive. Staff is recommending that the city council adopt a resolution to continue the temporary closure of Lagoon View Drive while reserving access for emergency vehicles, maintenance, and storm drain maintenance requirements. Little bit of background, Lagoon View Drive was originally part of State Route 14 connecting Oceanside and Vista prior to the construction of State Route 78. Once construction was completed, this portion of State Route 14 was relinquished to the city for public road purposes. The city owns Lagoon View Drive in fee while the state continues to own the properties abutting Lagoon View Drive. Lagoon View Drive is not open to through traffic, but is used for helicopter evacuation of crash victims from the surrounding highways and is also used as a mean for emergency response during lagoon fires, hazardous spills, and rescues. The road is also used to maintain a dual 72-inch storm drain that outfalls into the lagoon. Prior to the closure in June of 2021, the city had received a number of complaints related to transient and/or illegal activity occurring on Lagoon View Drive, including illegal dumping, illegal drug use and sales, theft of motor vehicles, trailers, and personal property, unregistered vehicles, sexual assault, and encampments. The proximity of Lagoon View Drive to the protected waters of Buena Vista Lagoon raised concerns related to illegal littering and dumping of waste from RVs and other encampments. As the sole owner of all adjacent parcels, the state of California was notified by Certified Mail of tonight's public hearing. This is an exhibit that shows the location of the closure gate as well as the state-owned parcels abutting Lagoon View Drive. Buena Vista Lagoon to the south is classified as a protected waters of the United States. The initial road closure was to protect these habitat waters while minimizing adverse environmental impacts caused by the illegal dumping, camping, and criminal activities in the area. Part of our analysis, California Vehicle Code, Section 2000 or 21,101.4 authorizes the temporary closure of roadways by local authorities when, after a public hearing and based on the recommendations of the police department, the local authority finds and determines that serious and continual criminal activity or illegal dumping exists. The findings must be based on the following criteria. One, the road is not designated as a through street. Lagoon View Drive is not a through street. Two, vehicle or pedestrian traffic contribute to criminal activity or illegal dumping. Prior to the closure, Lagoon View Drive experienced an increase in the number of vehicles parked overnight, an increase in the number of urban campers, and an increase in the amount of illegal dumping, waste, and deleterious materials along this stretch of road. The continued closure will not substantially, will not adversely affect traffic flow. It is a cul-de-sac, and it's not an access point to recreational spots or facilities or approved residential, commercial, or industrial uses. California Vehicle Code allows for an initial closure of 18 months once the governing body has made the determination through the public hearing process. Vehicle Code also allows for additional time extensions of the closure, not to exceed 18 months for each extension upon approval through the public hearing process. That is what we're here for tonight. This process can only be carried out via public hearing process for a maximum period of 13 and a half years. Upon expiration of the last term, the city must either reopen the roadway or proceed with the abandonment of the street. For each public hearing, staff is required to provide written notice to all affected property owners and residents that abut the proposed street closure area. For this public hearing, staff sent written notice to the state of California and published the public hearing notice in the Union Tribune. We have not heard anything back from the state regarding the closure of this road, either prior to this public hearing or with the last public hearing. This slide just shows that prior to the closure, illegal dumping was persistent, and since the closure, illegal vehicular camping is no longer an issue. Prior to the closure, Code Enforcement, Public Works, and Oceanside Police received numerous service requests and complaints related to illegal camping and criminal activities. Code Enforcement was required to remove trash two to three times a week. Since the closure, Code Enforcement response has dropped to one or two times per month with just 159 bags of trash and debris collected between February 23 and August 23. This is a market improvement in the requirements pre-closure. This is a marked improvement in the requirements pre-closure. Public Works staff responded three to five times per week to remove trash and was also required to schedule special street sweeping events to counter the trash and debris caused by the activities pre-closure. Public Works staff has noted that since the closure, service requests and complaints to their department have ceased. OPD has indicated they have received only one call in April 2023 this year regarding a transient individual making their way east from Interstate 5. City's crime suppression and encampment teams have had no recent issues and believe the continued closure to be a community benefit. Fiscal impacts, fiscal impacts are nominal, all costs are being absorbed under other city projects. Tonight's resolution will continue the closure for 18 months, at which time staff will bring the recommendation either to continue the closure or to rescind the closure in favor of one of the other prescribed uses, or abandonment of the street as necessary or as recommended. Lastly, staff recommends that City Council adopt a resolution to continue the temporary closure of Lagoon View Drive while reserving access for emergency vehicles, maintenance, and storm drain maintenance. I remain available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, this is a time for the public to address this issue. You have up to three minutes to speak on this. If you'd like to speak on this, you would not even have to have signed up. Approach the podium and you can speak, provide your name, and then you can speak for up to three minutes. Are there any requests to speak? No? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and, no one's rising, so I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing. And there's a motion to adopt the resolution. I'll go ahead, okay, there's a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. I'm going to go back up to item number 17. How many requests to speak do we have now?
We currently have 19 requests to speak.
Okay, we're going to go, we're going to go ahead and have two minutes each, two So, first, we're going to go ahead and, and this is to explain what item number 17 is, it's receipt of a, receipt of a presentation on the proposed storefront cannabis retail license, that is type 10 program, and provide staff direction on the proposed recommendations. So, we do have a report by our Development Services Director, Ms. Darlene Nicodro.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Darlene Nicodro, I'm the Director of Development Services for the city. The item before you is the proposed storefront cannabis retail license or type 10 program. Staff recommends the City Council receive a presentation on the proposed storefront cannabis retail license program and provide staff direction on the proposed recommendations. For some background, since 2018, City Council has taken several actions authorizing various types of cannabis-related businesses. In April of 2018, for example, the City Council adopted an ordinance allowing commercial and medical cannabis businesses excluding storefront dispensaries in specific industrial and agricultural zoning districts, subject to issuance of a local license and conditional use permit for CUP approval. Then, in 2018 and 19, the City Council approved various ordinances related to cannabis-related businesses, and so doing, increased the number of permitted cultivation facilities, allowed waivers of separation requirements on a case-by-case basis, allows no more than two local licenses and CUPs for non-storefront delivery facilities of medical cannabis. In June of 2020, City Council adopted a revised ordinance removing the medical-only restriction on cannabis cultivation and nursery facilities, thereby allowing adult-use cannabis cultivation. Later that year, City Council established tax rates for cannabis-related businesses following voter approval of Measure M. The table shown here indicates the current tax rates or the percent of gross receipts for each business type. So, here we are today, this is a snapshot showing the number of licenses allowed, the number of licenses issued, and of those, how many are currently operating businesses. As you could see, 20 licenses have been issued, yet only one-fourth or five have been in In April of this year, the City Council directed staff to develop a program allowing up to two licenses for storefront cannabis sales and return with recommendations to facilitate As recommendations began to develop, however, in the summer of 20, summer of this year, HDL Companies terminated its agreement with the city, and staff conducted research and developed the program recommendations based on information gleaned from other communities. A professional agreement, services agreement that was with HDL Companies provided cannabis support services that included technical expertise, application process, design, background checks, and also financial audits. Staff, however, has issued a request for proposals for cannabis support services, which closed on Monday, and we received seven proposals. Now to get into staff recommendations. First, regarding zoning and location criteria. Today, the city allows cannabis uses in limited industrial and general industrial zoning districts. Cultivation and nursery licenses are allowed in agricultural districts. Staff proposes to allow cannabis uses in the limited industrial and general industrial zoning districts of industrial areas and specific commercial areas, and those are listed here. They include the general commercial and special commercial highway-oriented zoning districts. We recommend that those areas are located with the Oceanside Boulevard and Mission Avenue corridors, excluding the historic Mission Overlay District. And of the nine cities sampled, staff found that five allow storefront retailers in both industrial and commercial districts. This map depicts existing limited industrial, excuse me, and general industrial, general commercial, and special commercial zoning districts located with the Oceanside Boulevard and Mission Avenue corridors, excuse me, excluding areas situated within the historic Mission Overlay District. Staff also proposes that the uses be subject to specific locational requirements for separations pursuant to zoning ordinance Article 36, which requires that cannabis uses be located at least 1,000 feet from the following sensitive land uses: public or private school, park, playground, or public beach, church, or other similar religious facility, and childcare or preschool facility. It's important to note that if the location does not meet one or more of the separations, the cannabis facility must request a waiver subject to City Council discretion. Staff recommends not permitting the cannabis use within Oceanside's coastal zone. California Coastal Commission has shared its opinion that cannabis operations have the potential to raise land use compatibility and coastal resource issues, and we are aware that a local coastal plan amendment or an LCPA that would be required, it could be about a two-year process. The next item is the application evaluation criteria scoring and selection process. Today, we use a commercial cannabis business application and the associated form, and that is awarded through the existing, is awarded through the existing merit-based scoring system and is at City Manager discretion. However, it's noted that this, this may be subject to legal challenges. We propose that amended documents be provided under the guidance of a new cannabis support services consultant, then bring the application document and procedures to City Council for consideration at a later date. In terms of the evaluation criteria scoring matrix and selection process, we propose that no preference be given to existing cannabis license holders, and this would provide an even playing field for all applicants. The merit-based includes a percent of business receiving a passing score, then going to the lottery selection process, and we found that this appears to be more legally defensible and helps to facilitate the process when there's multiple applications anticipated. We also recommend that we open applications for the type 9 non-storefront, cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, testing lab, and type 10 storefront dispensaries at the same time. In terms of license deadlines, today, there is no license deadline, so we found that licenses have been occupied for years. As stated before, only one-quarter of the licenses issued are active or have businesses currently operating. What staff proposes is to require that the applicant obtain a conditional use permit within 12 months of selection, or the city will disqualify the applicant and offer the license to the next qualified applicant. Then, the licensee must open their business within 18 months of CUP issuance, or the license will be revoked. New requirements would provide continued opportunities for applicants who are dedicated to vesting its license in a timely manner. Next is policy implementation. So, the existing policies are subject to Municipal Code, Chapter 7, and zoning ordinance Articles 4, 11, 13, and 36. Staff proposes to amend the Municipal Code and zoning ordinance for type 10 regulations as appropriate, and staff proposes to draft these amendments for Planning Commission and City Council consideration. The last topic is tax structure. Today, cannabis retail tax for non-storefront or delivery facilities is 5% of gross receipts. Staff conducted an analysis of comparisons with other municipalities and found the percentages, the retail tax rate shown here, as well as the fiscal year 22, 23 approximate revenue gained from those cities. Staff proposes to determine the retail tax rate upon further discussions with new cannabis consultant. And the City Council, we propose that the City Council determine how retail tax revenue will be allocated each year during the annual budget process, and this would be based on the city's priorities and needs. Next steps. After executing a professional services agreement with a selected consultant, staff expects to return to City Council in summer of 2024 with the following items. The cannabis business application guidance and application documents, evaluation criteria scoring and selection process, amendments to the Municipal Code and zoning ordinance, and the retail tax structure. Once the application process is established by City Council, staff will open the application window. New businesses that are granted a local license will need to apply for and receive a conditional use permit to be reviewed by the Planning Commission and City Council, similar to the existing process. So, for ease of discussion, similar to how staff presented recommendations for the housing workshop, listed here are the five items for consideration. Zoning location criteria, the recommendation is permitted within industrial and commercial areas within Oceanside Boulevard and Mission Avenue corridors to have them meet existing prescribed locational requirements for separation and not allow this use in the coastal zone. For the application evaluation scoring and selection process, to amend the existing procedure guidelines and the application, and also open the process at the same time for all the various licenses, develop a detailed criteria scoring metric and selection process. Staff proposes to give no preference to existing cannabis facilities or license holders, and applicants must achieve a passing score for meeting those minimum evaluation criteria. Then, those applicants are entered into a lottery system for awarding two type 10 licenses. Again, staff recommends requiring the applicant to follow the license deadlines listed on this slide. And in order to implement the type 10 program, staff would need to come back to the City Council with amendments to the Municipal Code and zoning ordinance for the type 10 regulations accordingly. Finally, for tax structure, staff recommends cannabis tax rate under the guidance of the new consultant. Currently, it's at 5%, but we have the ability to go up to 6%. And then, City Council would determine how the anticipated tax revenue would be allocated during the annual budget set. So, staff recommends the City Council receive a presentation on the proposed storefront cannabis retail license program and provide staff direction on the proposed recommendations. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Robson, do you have a question before we go to the public? Okay. All right. Whoa, it's like, wow, that was fast. So, we have 19 people, and we, because of the 19, we're, we've cut it down to two minutes, all right? So, go ahead and begin the names.
Our first speakers, and we do have two available podiums, so as you see your name pop up, please make your way down to the podium. Our first speaker is Karen Hanawi, to be followed by Diane M., to be followed by Randy Ocean.
Oh, it's up. Good evening. Darlene, Jonathan, John, Ryan, Eric, Mayor Esther, Rick, and Peter. You know me, you know George, we've spoken in person, via email, and over the phone numerous times. This recommendation favors a lottery system to release as much liability off the city upfront, but how can you guarantee the citizens of Oceanside that you aren't making a slew of legal headaches for the city once these two stores, picked out of a lottery base by chance, will bring? You reference cities like Vista and Encinitas as your success model. Both those cities did not previously have existing cannabis operations prior to their Lotto. Let me express what you do have, experience. Experienced operators here in the city who have gotten, who you've gotten to watch under a microscope for three and a half years. Our reputation for being good operators and delivering the best customer service is solid in this town and in this industry. Why are you choosing the unknown? Why are you leaving it up to chance for some cannabis company out of Canada, some multi-state operator out of Michigan, or some random person to win this Lotto? We've shown you document after document how other cities are allowing experienced operators already operating in their jurisdiction to grow their business. This recommendation is the complete opposite of what City Council directed staff to build out in, on April of 2019. Again, something seems wrong, something is not adding up here. Respectfully, I ask you to do what's right and grant Medleaf, your local operator, a type 10 storefront license. This is not a game to us. This is not a game to us, guys. This is our livelihood. We have put every sweat, tears, money into this business. This is how we live. This is how my employees live. Thank you. Thank you, Diane M., followed by Randy Ocean, followed by Lexi Goudy.
Goudy.
Hello. Dear Mayor Sanchez and city council members, my name is Diane, and I have been working in cannabis retail for over seven years now. And in that time, I've seen many stores that look great on the outside and on paper, but not all of them live up to their promises. However, I can with confidence say that Medleaf is not one of those stores. I have been working at Medleaf for over three years now, and it has become my work home. I started off as a driver and was promoted from within to shift leader and then to store manager. Medleaf's operators truly care for their employees, and this speaks volumes to the company's values and reputation. Many of my colleagues have been given opportunities to grow within Medleaf and make a career out of what some people see as just a simple retail job. Medleaf provides opportunities to its employees with a proven track record. Shouldn't the city of Oceanside do the same thing and promote a local business that has worked hard on their business and brought storefront to city council agendas? Thank you for considering my perspective.
Thank you. Randy Ocean, followed by Lexi Goudy, followed by Kasai.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Randy Ocean. I'm here in support of my community and Medleaf. Your commitment to the local businesses and your experience with Medleaf are duly noted. Important for the council, carefully consider the impact of introducing new unknown operators into the community, especially when there's already an established and responsible local business like Medleaf. Longstanding relationships and a track record to commitment to the community are valuable assets, and they should be weighed against the potential risk of bringing in new operators. Any concerns about the potential issues associated with lotteries for selecting businesses are exemplified by multiple cities like Encinitas are valid. Such processes can indeed result in complications, challenges, and potential legal issues. Decision made by the council should prioritize the best interests of the community, take in account the factors of the business's history, reputation, and commitment to local values. Once again, I implore you to think long and hard about bringing unknown operators into this community instead of working with the one you currently have a great standing with, Medleaf. Your dedication to the well-being of your community is commendable. I would like to thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Lexi? Followed by Kasai, followed by Kat L.
Good evening, dear Mayor, city council members and staff. My name is Lexi Goudy, and I am Medleaf employee number one. I have been working with Karen and George since the very beginning, helping them navigate through the ever-changing regulations, compliance, and competition. Throughout all of these challenges, Medleaf has maintained a good working environment with opportunities for education, team building, self-care, and most importantly, community service. I am proud to have led a lot of those services and been part of many projects that Medleaf has been involved in here in Oceanside and with the veteran community. Medleaf has the community benefit track record here in Oceanside. You don't have to guess whether or not we're going to live up to those promises. With potentially lottery winners, you have zero promises. Thank you.
Thank you. Kasai? Followed by Kat L., followed by Judah Merriman.
Good evening, Mayor and council. As an employee at Medleaf, I would like to share my personal story and consider the, urge you to consider the impact of your decision. Over the past few years, I have worked at different dispensaries in San Diego, and none have provided me with the care, honesty, or opportunity that Medleaf has here. Karen and Diane recognized my skill and allowed me to work towards a management position, and they gave me the opportunity to present myself. I am grateful to have a job that allows me to provide for my family. However, I worry about the future of Medleaf and my fellow colleagues here at Medleaf. Many delivery services have gone out of business due to this issue, and I think that we deserve a storefront, and we deserve the opportunity to continue working to provide for not only our families, but also the community of Oceanside. I urge you to carefully consider the impact of your decision on myself and my colleagues here at Medleaf. Thank you for attention to this matter. Both Medleaf. Thank you.
Thank you. Kat L., followed by Judah Merriman, followed by Cadence S.
Hi there, my name is Kat Levaser. Good evening, Oceanside City Council. You are the Oceanside's champions. You are the elected officials. You are the team that holds the key to community success and safety. Your duty, first and foremost, to my understanding, is to the city of Oceanside, which includes its residents and businesses. So we must ask ourselves, why are we entertaining the idea of opening up the type 10 retail application process to a lottery system? Do you feel that would protect the city and its, excuse me, existing business operators who have already shown that they have Oceanside's best interest at heart? There are several corporate juggernauts up and down the state who will apply and perhaps win that potential lottery process. In my deep-rooted history in the industry, I can almost guarantee any corporate newcomers will not care for Oceanside's vets via give-back programs, like Medleaf has, for example. I can also almost guarantee that they will never bring the community together for beach cleanups and events of that nature. Medleaf has always put their best foot forward in this way. Oceanside has always erred on the side of caution, which I have found incredibly reasonable and respectable. Why would we throw caution to the wind now? Who knows what kind of business practices a newcomer who wins the potential lottery may bring? I know you care deeply about your community, its citizens, and your local businesses. Please consider the unknown that the lottery application process would bring, and please consider rewarding current business owners to help provide safe access and community relations for the greater good of Oceanside. I support Medleaf. I support local.
Thank you. Judah? Merriman?
Thank you. I love Oceanside. It's a small, little, beachside, working-class town where mom-and-pop businesses still thrive, like Medleaf. It's minority-owned, veteran-owned and operated, employs 40 people here locally. What a lottery system is going to do, it's going to allow an outside corporation to come in and basically take over a fledgling market. It will be the death nail for Medleaf. I'd give us about two months if all the storefronts opened, we'd be gone. And that makes me sad, because I've been there for two years, and it's a great company to work for, and they're, George and Karen are great bosses who care about their employees. I think leaving, putting our name in a hat, but as Karen said, companies from Canada or Michigan or somewhere else, would be an abdication of the council's responsibility to look after Oceanside first and foremost. And this is locally owned and operated, and I ask you to give consideration to Oceanside local own and operate businesses first and foremost. Thank you.
Thank you. Candence S., followed by Mike ECIJA, followed by Christian BOCS.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. My name is Candence. I'm an Oceanside resident, and most people know me as Candy. I'm an experienced bontadner with Medleaf and service provider, and Medleaf is our members' go-to option for cannabis. They stick with us, they keep coming back to us, and most of whom are Oceanside residents. We often get asked about a storefront because they want to come in and meet us in person. They're loyal to us because they're happy with our service. They want to continue to build the relationship we started over the phone. That's the service we're dedicated to providing our community, Medleaf service from your Medleaf service team. Don't you agree that our members deserve a storefront? From Medleaf, we, as employees, deserve a chance to keep the business alive, to keep our jobs, to remain employed and productive members of this community. We've built strong relationships, and we're committed to providing excellent customer service every day because we care about our community and the people we serve. That level of personal care is much more difficult to find from a corporate dispensary that has not lived, laughed, and loved with our community as we have for the past three and a half years. Please consider supporting us today. At the last meeting, you all agreed that existing license holders would be first considered for storefronts. I'm asking you to stay true to those words, and we understand that there will be other stores in Oceanside. We're only asking to be one, the one that doesn't, since we've been here, we can stay employed and our members have, can experience the same top-notch service that they're used to from us, from Medleaf. We ask that you support Oceanside businesses first, support Medleaf. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is it Mike Akija? Is it Mike Akija?
Asia.
Akija.
Asia.
There you go.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Mike Asia. I am an Oceanside resident and a proud, loyal Medleaf customer. As a cannabis consumer for over a decade, I have had my fair share of both positive and negative experiences. I have firsthand experience with dispensaries who falsely advertise products, pricing, and deals. I have firsthand experience with dispensaries who have no reservations about selling expired or quality or untested product. And I have firsthand experience with dispensaries who talk down to uneducated cannabis consumers. Medleaf is different. Medleaf provides only the highest quality and tested product. They maintain full transparency when it comes to both pricing and deals, and they provide the one-of-a-kind, safe, accessible, and informative shopping experience that every cannabis consumer deserves. Medleaf is more than just a store. It's a welcoming community for those who value a positive, responsible, and enjoyable cannabis experience. A lottery is the same as pulling a ticket out of a hat. You have absolutely no idea what you're going to get. How will a lottery bring in additional operators with the same ethical standards as Medleaf, a local, privately-owned business with a respectable three-year track record of cooperation and collaboration with the city and community of Oceanside? Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Christian Fox, followed by Carolyn Bolton, followed by Gina Austin.
Good evening, Oceanside City Council. My name is Christian, and I'm one of the active owners of Medleaf. We started this process bringing the idea of storefront to you only after we have tried countless times to make our businesses a sea. The recommendation request on April 19 partly came about because of our hard work and persistence. Please show all the citizens and business owners of the city of Oceanside that you care for them first, above big pharma, big corporation, and outside influence. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Bolton, followed by Gina Austin, followed by Michael Bosherd. Bosherd. Carolyn?
Hello. Honorable Mayor and city council members, my name is Carolyn Bolton. As a long-term resident and business owner of Oceanside, I support a safe and regulated access to cannabis for our residents. Having licensed dispensaries in the city of Oceanside is long overdue. This proposal is a step forward in the right direction to promoting responsible cannabis use while generating much-needed revenue. It's well-known that our neighboring community, Vista, in the fiscal year of 2020, 2021, generated 5.1 million in cannabis business, which meant that the city had 1.1 million for the special projects to help ensure health of their youth, which you can see on their city council website from the mayor. The tax revenue would be put to good use for youth development programs in Oceanside, while licensed dispensaries text IDs and enforce age requirements that decrease the access of cannabis to teenagers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gina Austin, followed by Michael Bosherd, followed by Patty K.
Good evening, council members. My name is Gina Austin, and I represent two of the other existing operators here in the city of Oceanside, not, I don't represent Medleaf. One of the things that is important and I think is valuable for allowing the existing operators to have priority is it allows the supply chain to integrate here into the city of Oceanside, which they can't do. There's no farmer's markets for cultivators. The manufacturers can't sell their own product here in the city of Oceanside without going to another party. There's no vertical integration. And by giving priority to the existing operators, you would allow that to occur. This is similar to other cities that have given priority, and I sent you a several-page letter on this. But if you take Encinitas, for example, you can do both priority and lottery. I'm not suggesting that lottery is good or bad, that is a decision that you will all make, but you can add that to the process by simply saying, if you are an Oceanside existing operator that's been operating here, that has shown that they can get up and running for at least a year, then you should be able to have some sort of priority here. The second issue that I addressed in my letter is unrelated necessarily to the type 10, but the issue of opening the new application window, there's no ability right now for the operators to move their license. Granted, they'd have to apply for new CUP, but if your lease ran out and you're an existing operator, you have to wait for that window to open. Those licenses, the license portion, should be transferable so long as that applicant is in good standing, and that could be easily integrated into this code amendment. So what we're asking for is priority for the existing operators in however way you decide to do that, and you can still incorporate the other issues that staff, we recommend, we agree with and support all of the other recommendations from staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Bosherd, followed by Patty K., followed by Michelle Seer.
Hi, my name's Mike Bosherd. Thank you for being here and listening to us. I, I'm not a public speaker, but I am a business owner. I have a license in San Diego for indoor cultivation, and I was fortunate to get a few of the licenses here in Oceanside. Medleaf has made a pretty good argument for this, but it's always difficult arguing for favoritism. Here we are. The difficulty, and you saw a lot of those licenses, they're not pushed through, they don't have active CUPs. We do. We have some licenses that are dormant, and our problem is a path, the market. And this dispensary gives us that, you know, gives our employees that. Our employees, they live here and they work here, just like Medleaf. 95% of the product that I produce in San Diego doesn't go to San Diego. It goes out of the county, it goes to Long Beach, it goes to Orange County, it goes to different places. It doesn't make its way to retail in San Diego at all. It's a frustrating part about this, and the same here for Oceanside. 100% of it leaves Oceanside. So it never gets to retail, there's no taxes collected on it here, there's none of that. I think, you know, for us especially as producers of the actual product, we're not just taking in product and reselling product to the market, we're producing it. We're, you know, our neighbors out there have farm stands. There's agro-tourism for them, there's onsite purchasing and consumption. We don't, I realize that's a long ways away, but this is our closest path, so please consider this. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty K. Michelle Seer, followed by David Newman.
Is she here? No. Okay, hello, good evening, Mayor Sanchez and city council members. My name's Michelle Seer, I'm an Oceanside resident, and I'm speaking in support of the council vote to provide staff direction on the proposed recommendations of a storefront cannabis retail license program. Hope I said that right. It's beyond time for this to happen to me in the city of Oceanside. It seems so silly to me that there are several cannabis dispensaries in Vista so close to Oceanside, but none here. I know this because as a loving, caring niece, I helped my 83-year-old aunt, old Aunt Carolyn, with her regular purchases of the five-milligram capsules of THC that enable her to sleep well every night. She has exhausted all of the other possible sleep remedies on the market to no avail. This is the only capsule that works for her. Every time we drive to Vista to buy her cannabis capsules, I think about how our city could be benefiting from these dollars spent. So I really hope that we can approve this tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Newman, followed by Amber Newman, followed by, I guess, Patty K.
All right. Dave Newman, Fire Mountain. Of course, I support this item. I think the zoning is a little overly restricted, considering we're only talking about two dispensaries. And while I realize the city doesn't want to get sued, lottery really just takes control out of our hands. Even as staff refer to it, it leaves the results up to chance. Given the sensitive nature of this industry, I'm not sure this is something we just want to leave to chance. Otherwise... Otherwise, my other comments were going to be for the opposition, but apparently they didn't make it tonight. First time since 2016. We've been up here and very little opposition, so it's a little weird. I guess I don't have to deal with all of that. At the end of the day, I'm a consenting, responsible adult, and cannabis is a legal commercial product in the state that I live in. Oceanside voted to approve adult-use cannabis with 56% of the vote, and that was in 2016. It's likely that number has only increased seven years later. Thank you.
Thank you. Amber Newman, followed by Patty Kaye, followed by Ryan Brooks.
Hi, Amber Newman. Yes, I've been speaking on this since 2016, and I too came prepared for the usual commentary that seems to be missing tonight. So I will say that obviously I do also support this. I do think that, you know, there's a lot of things that dispensaries do. Dispensaries, you know, it keeps this product out of the hands of kids. It keeps it safer away than a parent's medicine cabinet, you know. It allows adults safe access. It helps OPD. What staff is suggesting tonight is limited. It's a little too limited to have a significant impact on the black market, but, you know, it's a beginning, and everything has to start somewhere. Couple of changes I would make. I would include commercial zones on Vista Way. I would ditch the lottery. I do realize, again, you're looking at litigation, but this is where you have the opportunity to hand-select the right license holders, ones that have established that they understand the industry and how to be compliant in it, that they know how to run a profitable business, and that they'll pay their taxes and do everything that they're supposed to do, and that they have a history of contributing to their communities. You don't really want to risk seeding a bad player on a roll of the dice. At the very least, I would suggest that you defer that until a new consultant has been seeded. Same with the taxes. We don't need to go crazy. You know, I do understand existing licensees want preferential treatment, but we're only talking about two licenses up front. So, you know, I'm not really in line with that. But I think there's a lot to talk to about the new consultants. But yeah, definitely, like I say, commercial zones on Vista Way, ditch the lottery. But let's move forward on this. Let's definitely vote yes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Patty Kaye here? Patty Kaye? I guess not, right? She's went home, maybe? Ryan Brooks, followed by Curtis Marker. Ryan?
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Ryan Brooks. I'm the CEO and co-founder of American Weed Co. We own the largest mixed light cultivation facility in San Diego County. Medleaf is one of our current delivery partners. They're an incredibly well-run organization. In addition to being really good people, they're actually one of our favorite partners. As a brand, our mission at American Weed Co. is to legalize cannabis nationwide for veterans. We see how cannabis can and has helped numerous people, hundreds of people, thousands of people who have dealt with alcohol dependency and opioid abuse. We also know that it helps with our internal acronym that we've created called PADC, which stands for PTSD, Anxiety, Depression, Insomnia, Chronic Pain. We are on the front lines in Washington, DC with one of the few voting board seats on the National Cannabis Roundtable. We are constantly educating senators and congressmen and women on the state of the industry and the benefits of cannabis. We're fighting for safe banking and also rescheduling. We donate a tremendous amount of resources towards lobbying and also to stop soldier suicide. As a community, Oceanside supports veterans in so many ways, but we feel it's time for Oceanside to have a professionally-run dispensary. Over the course of this year, we have worked with 284 dispensaries throughout the entire state of California. We can't think of a better organization than Medleaf here in Oceanside. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Curtis? Curtis Marker? Is there a Curtis Marker? Okay, I guess that's it for comments. Any comments that staff would like to make before coming to the council? No? Okay. Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm sure there's going to be a lot of comments up here, but I did want to go first. One, I want to do for our staff, I want to thank them for putting this together, and we received a lot of emails about how you didn't do what we told you to do, and that's not, I want you to know, I think that's not true. We gave some ideas and thoughts of what we wanted. You came back, as you usually do, with what you feel is the best recommendation to us. Now, to the public, we read those, and we don't have to always agree with staff recommendations. That's what they are, their recommendations. But I do appreciate staff's work on this, so thank you very much. And I'm going to make a motion here in a second, but I want everybody to understand why. What I learned in my research after getting the staff report and asking a few more questions, that a type 10 license holder can also automatically deliver, just like a type 9 license holder. I find that a little bit, and I don't use the word "fair" too often, but a little bit unfair to our type 9 license holders. So the motion I'm going to make--
Motion or direction to staff?
Or direction, well, huh?
This is, this is direction to staff. This is a process.
Thanks. What I'm going to recommend, and hopefully I have supportive council here to do this, is that, that we move ahead with your recommendation for the establishment of the two type 10 licenses. But in addition, I would like to, for our single existing type 9 license holder, we have two type 9, but only one's existing, and as I understand it, which is Medleaf, that the type 9 licensee shall be permitted to convert to a type 10 license. So in other words, they would be exempt from the regular application and lottery process. Upon, go matter outside. Upon successful conversion, the city would drop all of our type 9 licenses, because the, so that would give us three type 10 licenses in the city if council agrees, and we would no longer have any type 9 licenses, because those type 10s can deliver. So let me take just a couple minutes to talk what the conversion would mean. And basically, for me, what I think it would mean is that the existing type 9 license holder would still have to go through the evaluation process, pay the fees, and meet all the same requirements. But if they meet that minimum or exceed the minimum acceptable scoring, or whatever the percentage is, and I think in the report it said 80%, then the city manager would give them a type 10 license. And they don't have to go through the lottery process. They don't have to go through the same processes as the other type, the two new ones. And, you know, they can stay at their existing location, or if part of the process, they need to move to another location, then they would also be able to do that. They don't have to stay at their existing location, but they could. So that's kind of the direction I'd like to give. If emotion is not the right word, excuse me, but I think that does meet the need of supporting our existing business here in the city.
Councilmember Joyce?
I just wanted to know if staff had any concerns about that recommendation, or if there are any, anything outside that we should be considering before we all consider that recommendation?
Well, that's basically giving it to Medleaf, right? It's priority.
Well, can I interject here for a moment? So if I understand the direction, it would be to basically have a two-track process. So you'd have an application period for two new retail dispensaries that would be open to the entire public, and then an application process for the existing type 9 Medleaf, because although we allow two, there's only one permitted, they would have the opportunity to apply to convert that license to a retail dispensary. But, but that would be allowed either at that location or another location they would choose. But they would still have to go through an application process for the local license and the CUP. I said a lot there. Is that what you meant?
That's what I meant. You said it better. Thank you. And the only caveat I can think of is I don't know, in this process that was in the staff report, if there's any part of that application that maybe they already have done or applied to or wouldn't exist. So I would leave that up to staff to determine.
Well, if I could, the, we do not have an application format for retail dispensaries at this point in time. What's included in the staff report is the application format that you previously approved for the other businesses. So that application format will be developed in the scoring matrices with our consultant that's ultimately selected, but presumably then they would have to go through that process.
Yes.
Can I ask one other clarifying question? There was a, would there be, as part of this motion, any preference given to the other cannabis licensees for the other two? Or do you want to discuss that?
I had thought about that in my thing, because I was just thinking about the type 9, type 10 variation, but we can talk about it.
Can I ask, is that still a total of two? Or are you proposing that it be increased to three?
Two, the two new ones, and if they're successful in their conversion, it would be three total, no more. So three. But we're not, we wouldn't open it up to a new third one. If they can't convert, if they're unsuccessful in their conversion, we stay at two.
I would support that.
Did you want to speak?
I apologize. You're right. I had it on.
Councilmember Joyce? I'm recognizing you.
I did go to staff originally. So I would support that. I think because of exactly the issue you brought up, in the sense that it would really be a huge problem business-wise, and we want to be cognizant of that. Otherwise, I wouldn't have any inkling to support that, because I think the process that was outlined is somewhat fair, but I think that makes sense. I had some other questions. If anyone else wants to comment on that piece of the recommendation, though? No? Okay. So I had another question. Oh, you, go ahead.
Are you done?
Well, I'd like to talk about other things. So, but before we move on, I'd like to hear feedback on the thing that is currently being considered under the thing.
Is that what you wanted to speak to, Councilmember Weiss? Go ahead.
Okay. So I also, I'm a little bit worried that it's, we're focusing the areas too small. I would want limited commercial and special commercial to be included, and I'm specifically thinking about the commercial area, one of many, but the one that where OPD is currently at. And I feel like that's a pretty reasonable place for a business like this to open. I just don't want to overly restrict in a way that concentrates what we're doing and limits the ability for local businesses to like participate, because there's only five available sites.
Is that the historic district? Yeah, that would, I think, be a problem. Historic district.
Is the commercial area there in the historic district?
Yes.
Councilmember Joyce, I believe you're asking what the OPD site is zoned. That's a limited commercial.
But he--
It is in the mission overlay, yes.
So what challenge is added for it being in the overlay district?
There's some limitations on commercial uses within the historic overlay. Typically, those limitations are--
Regular uses.
--surround automobile-centric uses typically not being promoted there. It is proximate to the mission, and it's a resource that we want to protect.
And then the other piece was the Vista Way area north of 78. So just that, another, again, commercial area where it doesn't make sense to limit it, to me, it would make sense to at least provide opportunities if people were to buy in. So I don't know if there's support for that, but I would like that included in the motion.
Councilmember Weiss?
So I'm going to try to keep it simple, but not overly complicated. In the staff report, on the first two pages, they have five areas of recommendations. So, and I want to try to bifurcate the motion, so we cover as many as we can in one shot and then get into specifics. So the first one was zoning and location criteria. So I'm going to move approval of staff's recommendation, but include in there the Vista Way north of 78 commercial corridor as well.
Second the motion.
Councilmember Weiss, can we clarify that the area on Vista Way would only be limited to the special commercial highway-oriented district as proposed by staff?
Correct.
Yeah.
I do have a comment about the location. There's a motion in a second, yes. In District 1, there's a high number of regulated uses that is so much higher than any other place in the city of Oceanside. So I would prefer that we not have, add to that regulated, you know, this other regulated use in these areas, especially within the Latino community. That is, you know, we have a lot of liquor stores. We have, you know, we have several regulated uses. So that is my concern about this. They have spoken against this, and I would really appreciate that we kind of have it in other areas. That's my concern. So there is a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 401. Sanchez, no.
Thank you.
Okay, on staff's recommendations, I'm going to move approval of staff recommendations 3, 4, and 5, and we'll come back to number 2.
3, 4, and 5. So that's license deadlines, policy implementation, and tax structure. There's a motion in a second. No lights. Oh, Councilmember Joyce?
You move with lightning speed, sir. Hold on just a second. That was, so you, 3, 4, and 5 is what you're going to?
3, 4, 5. That's license deadlines, policy implementation--
Okay.
--and tax structure.
I do not need to speak to that. Okay.
Okay, so there's a motion in a second, and no other requests to speak from the council. Please vote.
Motion approved, 50.
Okay. Councilmember Weiss?
I'm going to support your motion in second on the type 10. But on the, on number 2, I don't know that the application under A needs to come back to the city council. I think staff already has an application, a comprehensive application process, just amend it to include type 10.
I would recommend we bring it back, so that it's determined to be consistent with the zoning ordinance and with the existing city code regulations.
So we have to beat ourselves with the stupid stick a few more times?
Well, I'm concerned about down the road, somebody arguing that the administrative regulations that have been adopted by the city in the application process somehow deviated from the council direction. So I think that that's a kind of a check-the-box item. We'll develop those criteria. I think those criteria need to be different than the current criteria, because it's a different business, and I don't think it needs to be a complicated matter, but we should bring it back and have your blessing on it.
So then, item B in there, I would like it to be changed to reflect Councilmember Robinson's kind of recommendation, and Councilmember Joyce's second. And the only other thing in there that I would like to see gone is the lottery system. I think it should be more merit-based and not a lottery system. I'll defer my colleagues for that.
Councilmember Joyce?
So my preference on this, and this is, of course, not to make it more complicated, is a weighted lottery system, where we have the best and most local have two to three pulls in the lottery, and then everyone else singles. So a weighted lottery is my preference.
And I'm okay with that, too.
So just so I'm clear, a weighted lottery that we could develop with a consultant, but not for the conversion of the existing?
Correct. This would be for the two new licenses.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Do you understand the motion, then? You're amending it? Let's see, I'm sorry. Okay, so Councilmember Weiss has a motion regarding, I don't remember 2-- so Councilmember Weiss has a motion regarding item number two with changes to two. And did you want to make some amendments to that? Councilmember Joyce?
So my suggestion would go with a weighted lottery, which is a little bit of a mix of picking what we think is the most important, which is making sure that everybody meets the minimum standards. And those that are local and those that
Oceanside?
Exceed, yep, that are local Oceanside operators that exceed our expectations and that we recognize deserve greater chances of earning those licenses would be granted greater chances in accordance with what HDL recommends.
Not HDL, they terminated their agreement with us. But if I understand correctly, then a weighted lottery, that would include the other licensees in Oceanside. Is that right?
That's what he's saying.
The non-storefront dispensaries, the other existing cannabis operators who have been licensed in Oceanside. Is that right?
Yeah.
Is that your motion, Councilmember Weiss? Okay. So I guess you don't have to amend because that, he actually said that's his motion. Is there a second? Deputy Mayor Keim?
Quick question. I'm always concerned when we start changing it this much up here, especially for those of us that didn't do the research like staff did. If we do this weighted lottery system, so does that mean someone that's local but that doesn't have a proven track record, can't really produce a viable business, will be weighted heavier than someone that can but is close? So that's why, when we start doing this up here, I get concerns. I'd like to hear from staff. I mean, I'm really tweaking this quite a bit.
Yeah, Honorable Mayor and council members, I can appreciate the concern certainly, but the intent of staff is to actually develop this criteria in consultation with our soon-to-be-hired consultants. So I would probably rely on them to advise us on best practices in that area. So, and that will, of course, come back to council for their approval. So you guys will take, you guys will get a second crack at it to make sure that we're consistent with council's direction under the guidance of our cannabis consultants. So I think we're comfortable with that.
And this is the direction that we're giving you, is so that you can work with the consultant and come up with something and then bring that back to us before it's actually implemented. Okay.
So the weighted, you're asking us to hold off on a specific weighted system right now and leave it more open-ended?
That's correct. The direction, as I understand it, would be to look at a weighted system. We would consult with our soon-to-be-hired consultant to take a look at best practices and come back to council with the recommendation on that system for your vote.
Okay, as long as that's open-ended, I want to make sure we're not setting ourselves, whether it's local or this, I want to make sure we do best practices.
We will bring back that criteria for the weighted system to council for its consideration.
Councilmember Weiss, does your motion incorporate what Mr. Borrego has just said? Okay. So we agree that that is incorporated? Yes. Okay. Are you finished with your comments? Okay, Councilmember Robinson?
Okay, I just want to make sure the conversion of the type nine license thing didn't get lost in this discussion.
No, we're aware of that.
Okay. Then I'll, whatever change, we're second, whatever we need to do, I'll second it.
I think there was a second by Councilmember Joyce.
Okay.
Right, there's a motion in a second. No further discussion. Please vote.
Motion approved, 401. Sanchez, no.
Thank you. So back to advanced written requests to reserve time to speak for item number 20. Is Wayne Godinay here? No? Okay, so on item 21, how many requests to speak do we have?
We have nine speakers registered to speak.
Okay, nine. All right. Three minutes each. Three minutes each. So Marie Imaida, followed by Ken Layton, followed by Susan
And Anthony.
And or Anthony Mora, one of those folks. Unless you each signed up for three minutes each.
All right.
Mr. Devaro, do you know if Susan and Anthony each signed up for three minutes each?
I don't know. They just have three minutes total.
Okay. Ms. Imaida, go ahead and speak.
We're resuming. Please, please be quiet in the chambers.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is
Could you put the mic closer to you, sorry?
My name is Marie Imaida, resident, resident of over 20 years. I'm here to express my opposition to the Eddie Jones Warehouse Project. Other than some revenue to our city, the project brings nothing but negative to the majority of current residents of Oceanside. Tch-cha, bad air quality, and the considerable noise causing nearby residents. Traffic congestion on 20-mile stretch of Highway 76. Additional traffic is expected from North River Farm and the Ocean Camp once these projects were completed. Lastly, but nonetheless important, our silent partners, wildlife, term unique to our area. They will suffer from this project as well. I had viewed the section on biological resources in the environmental impact report. For the vegetation mapping and the habitat assessment, two observations were made in June and in July of the drought year of 2022. Each observation was under three hours in duration and in the middle of the day. As a scientist, I am very disturbed that the conclusions about the habitat and the recommendations were based on such very limited observations. I beg of you not to proceed with this project. I firmly believe that our city, Oceanside, will be able to invite more suitable business for this location. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Ken Layton, followed by Susan Anthony Mora.
This afternoon, you canceled your closed-session meeting on the renewal of the lease where the city provides free rent to the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce, the only chamber in the county that gets such a gift of public funds. Chamber Chief Scott Ashton called for this secret meeting, hoping it would just sail under the radar with no scrutiny, analysis, or discussion. After speaking with Councilman Weiss on Friday, it became clear that he and probably all the other council members had not read the chamber lease contract, which was written in 2000 and expires in 2025. To help you understand the key points, I put together a brief package that was just distributed to you that shows that contract has actually been null and void for years. The contract says that the chamber gets the property at 928 North Coast Highway rent-free for as long as it maintains the Welcome Center. Only problem here is that, beginning in 2010, the Welcome Center was passed on to Visit Oceanside, a completely different entity. Contract null and void. Neither Main Street or Visit Oceanside existed when the contract was created. They are performing the marketing and community activity duties previously expected of the chamber. The chamber was left with the harbor days, which, oopsie, it let die after 60 years. And as you can see in your packet, the chamber's lease agreement with the city forbids the use of its property for any use not expressly granted in the lease. Yet, documents filed with the city show 928 North Coast Highway as the address for the chamber's political action committee. Plus, the chamber's phone number and Mr. Ashton's chamber email address are the contact for this political PAC. Contract null and void. Since the chamber abdicated its responsibilities with the Welcome Center, marketing, and public events, Mr. Ashton wagered that by morphing the chamber into a political group and by giving cash to local candidates, that would be his meal ticket to keep getting free rent. Bad bet, Mr. Ashton. You lose. A council majority has received campaign cash from the chamber. Gee, I hope this doesn't mean the chamber continues to violate its contract and keep getting free rent. Mr. Ashton, your secret meeting was canceled at the last minute. You can run, but you can't hide. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Susan Anthony Mora? Mr. Knott?
Trying to fit it in there a little bit. Jimmy Knott, 127, Sherri Lane. This is tomorrow, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. up at the El Corazon Senior Center. They're going to have a public meeting, public outreach meeting, on to Fire Station 8. And what this brought to my attention is we used to have, if you recall, you know, a few years ago, regular public notices at our city council meeting. We seem to have drifted away from letting the public know what meetings are taking place, especially public meetings. And I wish that you would consider either some special time during your meeting or take a break and have for some meetings to announcements so that the public can know what's going on in our city. And that way, everyone can recognize and participate in our democracy. Second thing is that our city has a number of volunteers. And I don't feel that they are getting the respect that they should be given. Lot of them are in our commissions. There should be in each associated department, a wall put up with their names at minimum. I would love to see the names with a photograph and maybe their email address for their commission. And what there should be is maybe just something there that would be for the public to see who is representing them that you have appointed. This would help them understand who to go to when they have a question. If they don't feel comfortable going to you, they can go to their commissioner. And I think that would be very appropriate. Now, also for past commissioners, there should be a wall somewhere in the city where due respect has been given so that future generations know that they will be remembered. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sandy Beal, followed by Benikia Kressler.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sanchez and city council members. My name is Sandy Beal, and I'm from Rancho San Luis Rey Mobile Home Park, where I'm the park representative and also the homeowners president. We had an ongoing issue at Rancho San Luis Rey regarding people staying in home that were not supposed to be there. And in other words, they were squatters. This problem went on for many months. With the help of the City of Oceanside, mayor, police, city council, star management, our management company, attorneys, and many phone calls, emails, letters, and people speaking at various commissions and the city council, this is finally over. Two weeks ago, Oceanside Police came and removed the people that were in the house and our maintenance boarded it up. There was more theft in the park during this time and during the time the house was occupied by the squatters. And we also believe there was drug, there was drug activity. Of course, any community would be happy to have these people removed, but the fact that we're an over 55 community with many vulnerable seniors made it even better. So many people were afraid for their, for their safety on a daily basis. This seems to be a happy ending to a very long and scary situation. So, thank you. I also wanted to briefly talk about Zoom. It's too bad that Zoom even has to be an issue. I understand that the city council may not be able to let people speak or be seen on Zoom, but there's no reason why the Housing Commission Ad hoc Committee for Mobile Homes or the Manufactured Home Fair Practices Commission cannot. I just had a lady from my park in her mid-80s contact me about watching this meeting on Zoom. Excuse me, on Zoom. Many seniors do not like driving at night, so they do not feel comfortable coming into an evening meeting. We all know that all the meetings are in the evening. Honestly, Zoom is a no-brainer. Let the people who cannot make it to a commission meetings in person be seen and speak via Zoom. These people who currently cannot speak on Zoom could affect the outcome of meetings. Seniors and people with disabilities that prevent them from attending commission meetings have voices, and they've been silenced by the City of Oceanside for no good reason. Zoom is an important tool that the City of Oceanside is not taking full advantage of. And honestly, whoever made the decision to silence the people on Zoom should be ashamed. Thank you.
Thank you. Benikia Kressler? And Jochen Kressler? Yvonne Taylor? Yvonne Taylor? So, okay, so we have no one else speaking, right? Okay. So going back to, sorry, item number 22, which is adoption of an ordinance approving zone amendment, ZA 22-00002, and local coastal program amendment, LCPA 22-00002, approving amendments to Article 12 D Downtown District of the zoning ordinance to establish a maximum density of 86, that was double the original, dwelling units per acre for mixed-use projects in the downtown district.
And we have one speaker on this item?
Okay.
Jimmy Knott?
Mr. Knott?
Jimmy Knott, 127, Sherri Lane. I was asked by a number of people to please address this because there's a lot of special exemptions that raise the number from 86 to huge amounts. I won't go into it because it was discussed by your council members here at the meeting. And I believe if you go with 86, it will take in a short period of time, be 150. And this is just, you know, packing sardines. And I don't think that that's appropriate for human beings. Maybe sardines, but not for us. But I think that what you have to look at is the quality of life. And does, there's something called better livability that has to be in here, an index of better livability. And I think a lower number, 55, 60 at the max, would be something that would be more reasonable. But when you're trying to pack a lot of people in, unless you would like to live elbow to elbow, please consider that.
Thank you very much. No other public speakers? Is there a motion for adoption? Okay, is there a second? Okay. Mr. Mullin, please title the ordinance.
This is the second read and adoption of an ordinance of the city council, the City of Oceanside, amending Article 12 of the comprehensive zoning ordinance to establish a maximum density of 86 dwelling units per acre for mixed-use projects in the downtown district.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 401. Sanchez, no.
Thank you. Thank you. General council member comments? Councilmember Joyce? My apologies, this weather, this dryness, has really given me sinus problems, so I do apologize. Councilmember Joyce?
Alongside yourself, Mayor Sanchez, and Councilmember Robinson, I attended the opening of the redone park in Cesar Chavez, at Cesar Chavez Park, the redone playground. I'm just, I was so impressed with staff's work on it and what they were able to do with the small space to provide a community really a much better experience. And so I just wanted to say thank you to the staff, and I'm excited and I appreciate all their work on it.
Yeah, what I understood from that was that they did a lot of committee outreach, and the kids really, really wanted swings to be added. And they initially thought there wasn't enough space, you know, because it's considered a pocket park. But they were able to move it around and add that element, and it was just a really, really wonderful project by staff. I think we were all, you know, like, really happy jumping for joy, so. Is that it? Okay, anybody else? Yeah, okay, so I have an announcement, and that is that the Tri-City Medical Center Board had last Thursday at their meeting an item for consideration, a very, very big item. And that is, it was because of some monetary issues that they were quickly coming into, they had decided to put out requests for proposals for some kind of a partnership with an existing hospital. And so they had two proposals that came forward. And I would like to say that I was very, very excited that UCSD Health was one of them, UC San Diego Health. The other one was Sharp. And reading through the proposals and the city manager, Mr. Borrego, and I both had the chance to speak to representatives from UCSD, answered everything that I can think of for a hospital, a public hospital, and to keep it from a public hospital to another public hospital. Their plan is to infuse almost $2 million into Tri-City Hospital within the first two years. They are accepting the seismic retrofit requirements. The hospital, Tri-City, had gotten a 17-year extension, which is coming up 2030. And so they have accepted to do that, which was a really, really big deal. They have accepted to bring back deliveries to Tri-City, which was a very, very important part for the negotiators that were, you know, on that committee. And they've really, really committed to working with the clinics, ensuring that, you know, even having, for example, some of the students, you know, be working in the community, a real hands-on experience for students, for med students. They are committed to having it a full-service, full-service hospital, so people will not be able to, not have to go to other places. They've committed to having cancer treatment right here at, you know, at Tri-City. They have made so many commitments. Their proposal was actually a joint powers agreement, not a long-term lease, which would have had to have been on the ballot, which would have been on November's ballot. Instead, they are going to be coming back by the end of March with the joint powers agreement. I understand they met with the police department to, because I did ask, I believe, was it you, chief, that they met with, UCSD?
I don't know.
Okay. Well, it was someone from the police department. I don't know who, but I also indicated that we wanted, we didn't want our firefighters or police officers to stand around, you know, too long, and really, we need the transfer as soon as you drop off a patient to get back on the streets. This is really, really, truly a wonderful thing. And I had, I did speak on, at the meeting in support of the UCSD model. Sharp did not include a commitment to bring back delivery, so that would have not been a full-service hospital, which is something very, very important to our community. It was a unanimous vote to approve UCSD. We are, I mean, the idea of excellence coming back to North County, to Oceanside at Tri-City is just, you know, really, really fantastic. So I wanted to commend the board members, the staff, especially Dr. Ma, the new CEO, for working so hard to bring this model, this dream, to North County. And then the other thing I'd like to do is adjourn this meeting in loving, really loving memory of Sherri Hedrick, who worked for the City of Oceanside, and Terry Gorman Brown, one of our staff, put together a really beautiful memorial. So I'd like to read that and then adjourn in her memory. "A cherished coworker, Sherri Hedrick, left us on Sunday, October 15th, after bravely battling a long-term illness. Her passing has left a void in the hearts of all who knew her. Sherri joined the city attorney's office in 2006 as a legal secretary and quickly became an integral part of our team. In 2014, she was named senior legal secretary. Her tenure of 17 years here was marked not only by her professional excellence, but also by the warmth and kindness she extended to everyone, really everyone around her. Those who had the privilege of working alongside Sherri can attest to her unwavering work ethic, her calm professionalism, and her grace and poise, and I want to add her smile. Sherri was a friend and a source of inspiration for all of us. Her easygoing nature set people at ease, and her infectious laughter had the power to brighten the gloomiest days. Beyond Sherri's professional achievements, she will be remembered for the genuine connection she fostered with her coworkers. Her spirit of resilience and her ability to find humor in the face of adversity serve as a reminder of the strength of her spirit." I mean, she was so courageous, so very courageous. She always smiled, even though she was going through a very, very rough time. "Sherri's legacy extends far beyond the third-floor office walls. She leaves behind cherished memories and a lasting impact on the lives of those she touched. We extend our deepest condolences to Sherri's brothers, extended family, and friends. May all find strength and comfort in the love and memories we share of this really remarkable woman. Sherri will be profoundly missed, but never forgotten." Thank you. Please rise. And let's adjourn in really loving memory of Sherri Hedrick. Thank you.